Dave Huber and I walk over toward the bar and I'm looking around and there's lots of people sitting down. None of them with food. And in the kitchen area, this hallway that goes to the back entrance, like where this parking lot is in the back. There's a kitchen area there in these big windows, you know, so you can see in there. There were lots of people in the kitchen and not a lot of food. So we left, we ended up going to the Garlic Rose. Place on the square. But the service. The sense that I got was that it was inhumane by coming in. I don't like that. We didn't do them a favor. Yeah, I know.
It's five thirty and uh.
Do uh, I can run off some co- did the agendas change from Friday when you set them up? Does anybody need copies of the agendas?
I think we have enough.
Okay.
The bird will be in the next.
Uh, the first thing on agenda, I want to just give an update for council on our rock salt supply. Uh, as of today, with our little storm we had yesterday, we have around a hundred seventy-five to two hundred tons left. And with that, uh, we predict that it depends what size the snows are, that that would get us through three or four more snows. We have uh, three hundred and fifty ton that we can still order. We have, uh, we have put in an order of three hundred ton. That was um, almost two weeks ago. And we haven't heard anything. They were gonna call today. I don't know if we got a hold of them, but we're waiting, but we do have three hundred ton more ordered. That should get us through the rest of the year unless it's great.
So the three hundred, I'm gonna get back up, okay, so, three hundred and fifty?
We have three hundred and fifty left that we can get from the contract. That's a hundred and twenty percent of our original.
Okay.
You know, that was, we wanted five hundred ton.
Yeah. So, so of that three fifty, we have ordered three hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're waiting on that right now.
Alright.
To come in.
Um, how much do we have in the barn right now?
Hundred seventy-five and two hundred.
Okay.
Which is enough for three to four more snows, depends how big they are. But we had to use rock salt last night.
Yeah. Okay, if uh. If we get in a pinch, or you know what, if Dave hasn't heard back on our shipment as far as when we plan on getting it. Let's get a hold of ODOT District Five. Let's see if maybe they've got some that we can use. And when we get our shipment in, we can give some back to them. If it looks like we're getting in a pinch, let's try to do something like that.
I will probably find out tomorrow what, you know, what Dave heard back on, so we can go from that.
Okay.
What's the capacity of the new barn?
Uh, we can get maybe eight hundred ton in there.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we get the last fifty tons?
Well, Dave just was estimating how much we had left on there and he just put in order for three hundred. Uh, we can order the other fifty anytime we want, so. Well, we can get it. I mean, I, I said the same thing, so. He just, he just ordered three hundred, so. He probably just didn't do all the, the mathematics on it, is that? It's, you know, it's less, it's like forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents a ton, I think. Which that one year was all the way up to sixty, so it's, it went down. Of course, next year if you're ready for it to go back up.
I bet you it will.
Yeah, so, we're feeling pretty confident we get this three hundred ton in in a week, we, we would have enough to last for the rest of the year, so that's what we're hoping for.
I um.
Or, uh, Tim said we could pilfer some from the door.
Okay.
For the right place.
The uh. I, I think I mentioned, uh, in the last council meeting. I've been getting more compliments this year on the performance of the street department. Um, of how they're handling, you know, the, the roads. I think people for the most part are understanding that this has been a pretty tough winter relative to, to some that we've had recently. Um, and I think that uh, there, I think our street department is getting a well-deserved uh, pat on the back from, from a lot of people in here.
Where we really, uh, did the right thing was to get on this, during that ice storm, we had, a lot of communities just could not treat what they plowed. Or they didn't get to even plow it, the people drove on it and became ice. We were lucky enough to plow and treat it, and that saved us from some of the problems other people were having.
Yeah.
But again, we're, you know, we're smaller than a lot of communities, so we, you know, there's a better chance of getting that done, but we got that done, so that saved us.
When you say we're better equipped, we're better equipped.
Yeah, we'll try to be.
They do get after it.
When that stuff comes down fast and you can't cover every area at the same time, uh, it could be tough, so.
Yeah.
Alright, um, number two is a, uh, replacing dump truck, I have a legislative request. We uh. Have talked about that, I think we'll have prior to meetings about the, uh, the dump truck. Uh, we're looking for a tandem dump truck. It, uh, I'm asking for uh, up to a hundred forty-five thousand. We, uh, we think it's gonna be less than that. They, we did do, uh, we will get, I think, uh, ninety-five hundred. They put us as a trade-in if we wanna trade that in. Uh, but Keith still might sell that on eBay or wherever he's selling, also we may get more, but we're at least guaranteed ninety-five hundred. So that ninety-five hundred would come off to one forty-five, but we just, Keith helped me do a legislative request, we decided to do it, what it costs. But I would say that this price will be probably one, it'll be in the one thirty-five or less range for this, okay?
Okay.
But we're asking for that, because we didn't know, when we did, we didn't know what we were gonna trade in. For, and this is for a tandem, to replace a tandem, the one we're gonna trade in, is the old tandem, which is a nineteen ninety-eight. We, we, I think we misquoted it, said it was two thousand and three.
That's the one you're gonna misquote?
Well, we're gonna get rid of two, there's another one that, that.
The, the ninety-eight's the one that you'll be trading or selling on eBay?
Right, and then there's a nineteen ninety, uh, four that we're also gonna trade into. Nineteen ninety-four and a nineteen ninety-eight international tandem.
So is Keith thinking that uh, he'll set the minimum bid at what trade-in value would be?
He could, he doesn't, I don't think he knows that, I got that information linked today, so.
Okay. He'll be here later, so.
Okay.
Updating.
And then he may have to do, I, I have that on here, the legislative request to dispose of the dump trucks, we're not gonna do that tonight. Uh, we're gonna wait for him to figure that out.
Now Bob, that's not the, just the, the bed?
That's everything, that's the plow, everything. The bed, the chassis, the plow, that's, it's all in the legislative request, the, the whole specs are in there. If you wanna look at that, but it's, it's for everything, it'll be anything we have to add to that.
Fits with the capital improvement.
Within capital improvement.
Plow, spreader.
It's got the wheelbase.
You talked about it before.
That we replaced the dump truck. Yeah, we already did that.
Doug, is it asking for one forty or one forty-five?
One forty-five.
And then whatever we get on the.
So after we sell the other one, we should get one thirty?
Uh, one thirty-five or less, you know, it'll be between one thirty, one thirty-five. Unless Keith does a great job and gets twice the amount, it'll be less than one thirty-five.
So we're just slightly over budget for capital improvements?
Yeah. Doug, I don't think I signed that yet either. No, but.
Okay. And the disposal of the dump truck is nineteen ninety-four.
Uh, nineteen ninety-four dump and a nineteen ninety-eight international.
Both of them?
Yes.
Disposed of?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I, uh, we were, Keith and I, we were going to do a legislative request to dispose of the dump trucks, but he wasn't sure how he wanted to do that, so we're just going to skip that one. We don't have anything for that now. Uh, the last, I have a legislative request, uh, I'll play the story. That, uh, with impending weather that we were gonna have with rain and the snow melting. Uh, we had a horrible log jam at Irvingwood Drive. And we, and I had the mayor go down, we had our engineers, at the bridge, we had our engineers come down from Jove's and looked at everything. And we all determined that this log jam, it was really bad, that we needed to get rid of it. If we had a big rain and more stuff came down, we would have flooding, we've had it before. We had to rappel down over top of the bridge, uh, at that time. So, uh, we went ahead and did this, we thought it was an emergency. Um, well, that's a million dollar question, well, it's less than a million dollar question. It's uh, seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand.
I've seen him over there working.
Yeah, law excavator, law excavator did it. Uh, he, for some reason, he, he can't send emails through mine, so I have sent it to my personal email, but it's on my phone, but I can't print it. So I'm gonna print that and turn that in. I don't know why they can't send it to me. Uh, but this is a legislative request to, uh, within the general fund, appropriate seventeen thousand law general contract to clear log jam on Irvingwood Drive East and South Fork concerning emergency. And that's something that we have had to do every two or three years, is where the South Fork, the Lucky River and Ramp Creek meet. The, uh, a lot of the, uh, logs and stuff just pile up there and then. The water comes down like by Buckeye Lake. They said the water raised a foot or two today.
My bad?
Yeah.
There's no any core event to do with different houses?
There's no help, no money help for that.
Yeah, there's no financial help for that.
It won't let you deal with it.
Is there anything we can do, like to dredge it or to make that? That's Core's responsibility. He won't let us.
The, the problem is that bridge has piers on it. And probably at the time, if we didn't have, we probably discussed it, you were probably here, discussing that at one time, but it was, it's a lot more expensive than a free spanning bridge.
Yeah.
And we probably just decided to replace the deck instead of the whole bridge. And it definitely, you know, costs a lot more money, so we decided to do it.
It's like what we did on the Hopewell Bridge.
Yeah, if we didn't have those piers there, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, just on other items, uh, we, all those potholes that everybody's hitting complaining about, we are trying to fill them, so. If you see them, avoid them until we get them built, so that's a good thing. And, um, so I'm saying out this with Keith, but he's not here, but Dave thinks that the timing on some of the lights on seventy-nine. That when we had, that guy, kinda go back in the teens, thirtieth, that he thinks they're all working at the maximum amount now. You know, they're supposed to change for what time of day it is. If we are going to do some type of traffic study or timing on seventy-nine, you know, he's, Keith's wanting to do that also. So that's maybe a discussion we can have, because Keith brought that up last time, so maybe we can start a discussion if we wanna look at that.
Okay, so they're at their max on the time?
Yeah.
As far as the traffic flow for seventy-nine?
Yeah, it's always at the max, I guess, now, and it's supposed to deviate from that at certain hours somehow.
Yeah.
We have a phantom guy changing the climate. Um, and then also, uh, those controllers I talked about last time, I don't have anything this time, but we're going for research to see what cost of control. To install the controllers on thirtieth and Andover. And then the, the other one is that Clare and, and, uh, and thirtieth street.
Yeah.
So we're going to look at that and come up with a price for that, some of those are on the last legs. And I guess we'll bring this up now, is there anything? Remember when we talked about, uh, on seventy-nine with a left-hand turn lane, with some of those areas, like the line maybe was at the bank, maybe at Park National? We discussed some of that stuff on thirtieth street?
Yeah.
And then we all, so didn't know if we were gonna put crosswalk in, or there were some changes we were going to make. And you, and you said, let's get our paving done first and then maybe we, we will look at that. Um, I think we may have to decide what we're gonna do before we change these controllers over in Subway, or how we're gonna do this. Um, I think we'll have a discussion about that next time. Definite prices of what it costs to change that controller, then we can maybe rehash what we were talking about before, see what, if we wanna do anything.
We talked also about having the, the guy in the sky.
Like?
Uh, controller for, or, I mean, it's not the actual box, but you know, it's the thing that triggers.
Right.
You know, I remember we talked about that too, I, I think I still have that information. So, it was Light District that was putting those in, right? We talked about maybe someday.
Wait and see what they did.
Yeah, yeah, we could go down there and take a look and, yeah.
So that's all I have, the street department, somebody else has something?
Did you, um, did you mention, Bob, how far along are they in clearing that log?
The, uh, the log jam is done.
Oh, okay, good.
It was seventy-five earlier today, Dave, uh, called me and said they were, they were done.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't went by, but that's what they said. So if they aren't done, they, I think they had to bring up some of the concrete out there and do some, so maybe there's a little bit, but I think they have all the stuff cleared out.
Good, good. Hopefully the snow continues well.
I hope and it doesn't rain. Seven thousand.
Okay. With nothing else to report, we'll, during the streets committee, it's close, five forty-five.
Okay, we'll call Parks Recreation and Davis Shay to order at five forty-five.
Are there any, I don't know, she's.
He's got to make sure this is here.
Oh, yeah.
The first item on our agenda is Joe Lattick, the executive director from the Davis Shay House is here to give us a couple of court, and I know I saw Joe come in, so.
Joe? Joe?
He can sit down here if he wants, or?
Yeah, Keith's gonna be coming in at some point, so it might be better down there. Oh, is it?
Joe, you can sit at the table, Joe, we have a place at your table. I thank Joe for being with us here tonight and.
Hey Joe, I didn't know, do you have any, like, anything on a thumb drive that you want me to put up on the screen here, or? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
There's not enough of it. I think there's enough.
Put one here, put one down here for Keith.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come and give an overview of our financials for the Davis Shay House and Heath Community Arts Council. Um, starting, uh, the financials, we, we have recently purchased the accounting software QuickBooks. We have begun the new year using it and transferring our data into the new system. The twenty thirteen financials is in the old Excel system and the new budgets are now in QuickBooks, so we're starting that. Uh, we have scheduled an audit with Baker, Baker and Haas for the future. Uh, we will be auditing several years prior to me taking over the executive director position into twenty twelve. The breakdown of.
I'm, I'm sorry, Joe, hold on a second, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to write, and, um, the, uh, uh. The audit will be looking at what years again, please?
We're gonna be looking into, uh, several years prior to me taking over the executive director position into twenty twelve on the triple version.
Okay, so, okay, so we'll include twenty twelve, twenty eleven, some, some number of years from twenty twelve back?
You don't know how many? Three?
About two, two or three.
Two or three, okay.
Two or three, they're gonna look and see what we need.
Does, uh. Was that, a- a- as far as starting at two thousand twelve instead of starting at two thousand thirteen, was that on their recommendation, or was that what, what the Arts Council had sought, um, for, for the scope of the audit?
Well, I started in September of twenty twelve, so they can go on up until about four months to the end of twenty twelve where I started.
Okay.
I have a page, or two pages, of, of breakdown of total funds. That would be for January first of December thirty-first of twenty thirteen, and I also have the year of twenty twelve. Um, I've included the comparison between the two years. And the difference from the increase in the expenses for the twenty thirteen is the addition of my salary of which the city used to pay. And the contribution from the city is recorded in income reports. Um, it's also an increase, increase due to advertising and marketing materials, an expense where money's not been spent before.
Which page is that, Jill? Okay.
And we have some chart of accounts for twenty thirteen, a summary. This basically breaks out our checking, our savings, our money market, club account, uh, Park National Bank, a couple of accounts. In the income reports, funds we had spent, um, to cover the cost of a dance floor. We also had new computer, uh, reverse osmosis system, the computer installation, we had to purchase a server and backup battery. And forced the labor. We have the chart of count totals, which has the categories, which it will state tees, private tees, paid or private events, et cetera. I had sent an email, uh, with Deb Cole earlier, I believe it was dated December seventeenth, to where it broke down to category of one thirty-nine. Uh, and I have the breakdown in your packets if you have any questions.
So these are the revenues from various, uh, events, and then the bed tax included, so that's the two oh eight, okay.
Yes. Um, looking at the, um, twenty thirteen, uh, chart of accounts with the categories and subcategories with the totals. Um, most of your expenses are payroll, taxes, advertising and food. And I've broken out the advertising and marketing. Um, the, the total spent on advertising is the recommended twenty percent of your total budget. And marketing materials were a thousand sixty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Uh, printing, copying was eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Magazine advertising was a thousand ninety-five dollars. TV and radio was six hundred twenty dollars. Uh, print was three, uh, thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-seven, ninety-eight. Funds were five hundred ninety dollars. Yellow page advertising, a thousand eight hundred sixty dollars, ten cents. Social media, four hundred eighteen dollars, fifty cents, and the water bill insert was a thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Now, the yellow page advertising and some of the print copying also was social media dollars, which was difficult to break down.
Jill, I apologize, that, that breakdown that you just gave us, is that on one of these pages?
No, it's just verbally given to you. Uh, the summary of deposits by category will give you all of our deposits throughout the, the year. And this sheet is what QuickBooks is gonna look like. And it's, it's more detailed, it will give you more details and more categories, it'll be more thoroughly explained where the monies are going. So we have one for income, and we also have the twenty fourteen budget on this sheet. And we also have one for expenses.
Um.
Just to go over some expenses, um, these expenses were formally paid by the City of Heath. Uh, computer repairs slash equipment, which we paid two thousand four hundred fifty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, website maintenance, which was six hundred dollars. Landscape contract was three thousand eight hundred ninety di- excuse me, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Now, formally paid was eighteen thousand dollars a year for landscaping services. I've chosen another company and we're now saving fourteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, the community events, Christmas open house, Halloween, Easter, retired citizens luncheon, et cetera. Uh, the City of Heath had, had not contributed to the events above, uh, contrari- contrary to the management agreement, so we had to take care of that expense.
Say that last part again, Jill, I apologize, I was, I was reading this, so, go ahead.
I said the City of Heath has not contributed to the events above that I have mentioned contrary to the management agreement that was signed. So we took care of the expenses.
Okay. Which events are those again, Jill?
Uh, Christmas open house, Halloween, uh, the Easter, uh, retired citizens luncheon, for a few. No, we did not, and I'll talk about that here later. We have a sheet that has the breakdown of free, of catering, of what monies they have been able to bring in for us in regards to weddings, rehearsal dinners, uh, ceremonies, and also some corporate award meetings. And that total amounted to eight thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. We have a listing of the Davis Shay House schedule of events, which will be a listing that looks like this. Uh, the listed events are only those that are confirmed, uh, there are many other events, both private and Davis Shay House sponsored, that are currently in the planning stage. In regards to a couple of the events, one in particular, the teddy bear tea that was to occur in December and then once again in January. Um, the event was canceled twice, both due to terrible weather conditions of snow and ice. Uh, both were snow emergency levels of one and two, uh, we will reschedule the event in the spring and also the month of December. And of course, as, as you mentioned, the Christmas open house twenty thirteen, uh, it was canceled due to snow and ice. Um, after monitoring the weather conditions at the Davis Shay House, Parks and Recs, Greg White, former mayor Dan Dups, uh, building maintenance groundskeeper John Faribault. And myself made the decision to cancel the event, and it was determined that the conditions were too dangerous for the visitors. Um, this event is not easily rescheduled because the entertainment, the transportation, the horses, et cetera, are scheduled elsewhere on other dates. Um, future weekends at the Davis Shay, Shay House were already scheduled for private events, already. Um, due to not having financial support from the City of Heath, uh, we were down at least seven thousand dollars that would have been put towards the Christmas event. Um, a major musical concert was canceled last summer due to lack of funds from the city under, um, management agreement. Just to take.
Yeah, Jill, just so that I'm on the same page with you.
Mm-hmm.
Which part of the management agreement are you referring to where it says that the city will financially?
It's under paragraph two one, and it says oversee, coordinate a minimum of four co-sponsors, City Heath and Heath Community Arts Council, community cultural events per year. That significantly impacted the community and demonstrates the City of Heath's interest in providing cultural arts. Including but not limited to the following, outdoor music concerts, indoor/outdoor theaters, historical events, holiday celebrations, children's events, et cetera.
Okay, so. Which. I'm just trying to get on the same page with you, Jill. Which part of that? Encumbers the city to financially, uh, back the events?
As I understand from the past, that there was contribution. As I understand from the past, that there was contributions at past events that was financially given to the Davis Shay House to put those events on. I could pull some records.
I understand that there were some in the past. I'm wondering what part of that paragraph says that the city is obligated now?
I think the board, and you might need to get together and discuss that.
Perhaps. Okay.
We have done some facility improvements. We've installed a reverse osmosis system for the advice of the Heath City Water Department. And after much research and consultation with the coffee machine rep and flushing of the water system, the sediment problem cannot be corrected without it. We were advised by the Water Department that this was recommended several times in the past, so we went ahead and took care of that. We have painted the lower level L space under the house. We have moved and installed a new lighting system, installed an artwork hanging system, all to create an art gallery. And this satisfies our 501(c)(3) status as a cultural arts organization. More shelving and storage units have been installed. The fountains out front have been repaired due to the concrete chipping. The fountains were never sealed, therefore we have had them sealed and painted. We have increased the number of humidifiers or dehumidifiers on the lower level to balance the air and moisture in order to regulate the heating and cooling. Due to lost calls, no voicemail, grappling in the lines, we have replaced our worn-out phone system with a cost-effective option that is VoIP internet-operated, and this is a reduction in operating costs. The computer server has been replaced, and the equipment outlived its lifespan, and it was necessary to replace the unit and have a backup unit also. Just to let you know, we are always mindful of our resources, and therefore we try to conserve. A couple of ways that we try to do so is lighting has been reduced inside and outside of the facility. Although we have reduced the outside lighting to conserve energy, it is sufficient for security purposes. And walkway lighting is unnecessary after hours, as nobody should be on the premises. We have a walkthrough checklist each evening to make sure lighting is off, the doors are locked. Laundry is only washed with full loads, same with the dishes.
Jill, on the, on the 2014 budget for expenses, looking at the actual spending in 2013, item number six-two-eight-one-one, it was sixty-five hundred twenty-seven dollars on house furnishings. Some of the things that you had mentioned just a little bit ago that have been replaced, are those items included in that line item, or are they elsewhere in the 2013 spending?
Well, I'll tell you what would be helpful, is for you to write down your questions, if you have any, and submit them to me, and I'll make sure that I get a more detailed explanation to you, because we'll have to look into this.
Okay.
Because we're transferring from QuickBooks, or Excel into QuickBooks.
Okay.
So if you would do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And the last order of business would be matters of concern. We have discovered that the slate on the roof has never been sealed. Snow blows under the slate plates, and it has gotten into the house rafters. Therefore, water damage and mains parlor. And as I understand it, this problem has never been addressed and continues to be a problem. So that would be a concern that you might want to look into.
Is this, is this part of the house, Jill? It was damaged during the tornado, or is it in other parts?
It's not on the corner. It's more towards the restroom on the other side of the wall. When you go into the roof, look to your left.
Okay. So that would have been work that would have been done as part of the, as part of the improvement project from the state grant, that part of the house? Because I know they put a new roof on at that time.
In that particular location, I couldn't tell you. I'd have to ask Craig about that.
Okay. Hey, Bob? Let's check on that.
Yeah, we've had the roof worked on many times, had the slate replaced, and I can't ever remember anyone saying we need to seal it, we can do it. We've never had that recommendation from anyone that I know.
How long's it been happening, Jill?
Well, Craig tells us that it continues to happen whenever we have a big snow, and it comes in from the west, and the wind blows really hard.
Which is always going to happen, because there's nothing there to stop the wind. Know what I mean? Did it happen last winter, or has it just started this winter?
I couldn't tell you about last winter, but I know this winter we had water damage because it started to melt, and it came down in the mains parlor, and we've had to repair that.
Okay. I know we've had some of this here before, but knowing Craig, he would do whatever he had to do to prevent that happening again, so I don't know.
Okay. All right. Let's circle wagons on that, Bob, find out what's happening.
Mayor, you have one question on the budget versus the actual. Do you want us to accumulate all the questions pertaining?
If you could, please.
Because there are several big number discrepancies on the income side and the expense side, that don't really make a lot of sense.
Yes, if you could, if you could give that to me in writing, then we'll make sure that we look into that and give it back to you.
Maybe, I don't think, I mean, maybe we could ask some, some very general questions that could maybe be helpful. For instance, just in general, the budgeted income for fourteen is, I'm trying to do math in my head real quick. What is that, about sixty-five thousand more than actual income from thirteen? If I'm doing that math quickly and somewhat accurate.
Sixty-six.
Which I know, twenty-six thousand some dollars of that difference through the increase in the donation that the city gave to the Arts Council of the bed tax money. The city's portion that was donated to the Arts Council through the ordinance that is currently in place, that total was ninety-five percent our total bed tax amount. That eighteen-six-eighty-one, so that accounts for twenty-six. Yes, yeah, percentage is the same. That's what, I'm talking about the dollar difference between budgeted for fourteen and actual in thirteen.
You're forecasting a huge increase in bed tax.
No, 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 they already got that. Yeah, that is what they received.
That's what they've already received.
Yes. Yeah, that is, that is the 2014 amount. That's what I'm saying. Out of that sixty-five or whatever thousand-dollar difference, twenty-six I know is from the increase in the bed tax donation. Can you maybe help us, I'm towards the top, contributions from corporations, sponsorships, from individuals and organizations, grants from local and national organizations, and fundraisers. None of these were actual revenues in 2013. Can you maybe just generally speak of the efforts that are being done to garner these, gotta be approaching forty-five thousand dollars additional revenue?
We have several fundraisers that we're going to have this year. We also have applied for several grants that are fairly large, and we're waiting to get a response back for those.
Okay.
Do you have details on that?
That's what, I'm looking at the events. Are any of those listed on the events, Jill?
We have a Art Under the Stars that we've got planned in the summer, and it's going to be an art auction, also a dinner, dancing, a nice evening for people who would like to have some very nice art.
Two of those events then in the summer, or like one in the spring, one in the fall? Because I've seen there's two besides that.
I'd like to have a festival in June for the community, for an arts festival.
Okay.
So we're trying to come up with bigger, bigger events to bring in more money, bring in the community more so than a tea or a lunch would get us.
Do we have other questions?
Yeah, I got.
Under your expenses, I guess, advertising. Forty-two thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. The only advertising that I have seen about the Davis Shay is primarily the advocate. I have not seen anything on television, unless, you know, I'm missing it somewhere. I mean, is it on?
The TV.
TVs and clubs.
The TV show that it was on was a program on a Sunday morning. It highlighted Licking County, and it was called Out and About, and it had a virtual tour of the house. And we had about, about ten minutes worth of time that they advertised the house, showed what it was about.
Okay. Primarily, what I'm, I guess what I'm looking at is, is there anything that could be like a thirty-second spot or a one-minute spot?
I could if I paid for it. I need to.
But I'm just saying, I know that the advocate doesn't come cheap. But I think maybe, maybe look at the advertising.
Did you write that down, Ken?
But anyway, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe like advertising dollars could be used a little bit for where it is gotten out into the public a lot more.
I have plans for additional advertising elsewhere. But I'll still stay with the advocate.
Well, I'm not saying that to, I'm just saying that I know that it's not cheap.
No, it's not.
Jill, also on the expenses side. Item six-two-one-five-oh, contract employees. We had forty-two thousand plus in thirteen spent on that, and expecting zero in fourteen is.
This was Lori Rataball's position, and it's also Karen White's position. They're under a temp service. We are contemplating the idea of making them into regular employees, so that we can avoid those extra fees from the temp service.
Oh, okay, so the line item sixty-two-one-fifty reflects them when they were paid through the temp service?
Yes.
Okay. Where does it reflect them then being paid outside of the temp service in fourteen?
It's going to go on to your second page.
Oh, is that the sixty-six-seven-hundred and the sixty-six-eight-hundred?
Looks like there's, yeah, sixty-six-seven-hundred and sixty-six-eight-hundred, looks like there are new.
Is that right? The fifteen-six and the eighteen-seven?
There's a couple of changes I need to make. We didn't take some information off and put some new in, so I'll make sure that we take a look at that.
TV, do you?
Oh, yeah, we have those. I was looking up above. There's a few that I need to erase. Yes, the fifteen-six and then the eighteen-seven would be the Karen White and also the Lori Rataball position. Other questions? I do have, I'm sorry, I want to go ahead before we end. Over time, there's been drug dealers, drinking of alcohol, and people actually having sex in our parking lot. And mostly at night, but we've also caught some people during the day. I propose to possibly a gate be installed at the end of the driveway. It would save costs for your police patrol at night. It would keep people from going back there when they really don't have the need to be back there. And also, it would help people to find our driveway. We have a lot of problems with people not knowing how far to go at the end of the road to reach our driveway. If you could consider that, I think it would be most helpful, implicit security reasons.
Bob, any ideas to how much it costs to, or how much it would cost to put in a gate system similar to like what we have at Geller Park, where the police officers could hit the button and close it in the evening?
I mean, we did that so long ago, I, I can't remember.
Okay.
Is that something to be able to look into, and determine if it's feasible?
I mean, Guy has it too, the wastewater.
The wastewater.
They have done it more recently than what we did, but yeah, we can call. He just wanted to go across the drive, is that what you're saying?
If we could, yes. I'm not sure what you would do.
Like, it's not connected to anything else. It would just be, where exactly on the drive?
Will it start in the drive? Probably there at the bearing end when they start to go up, or even once you reach the top of the hill.
Yeah, the only thing about having a gate like that is.
The parking, is that what you're saying? The road?
At the end of the drive.
Kind of right there by the Walmart, right?
Yes.
Walmart ends and your dinner.
Oh, you're talking about there, right there.
You know, the only issue, another issue that I'm thinking that just came to mind about that, though, is that with gates like at the park, we'd have to make sure that we had right-of-way, you know, the gates, when it's open, gates all the way off to the side. We'd have to make sure that we had right-of-way that would allow us to have something sticking out there. If not, we'd have to do something maybe like that, or.
In the wintertime, you know, there's plenty, we can't close our gates because of the snow.
Yeah.
That may not be closed all the time, or we may not be opening it all the time.
Yeah, that might not be the, that might not be the best idea for that.
Okay, do you have any else, Jill? Something else? Does anyone else have anything?
Will we expect the changes in this budget, these numbers, timeline in thirty days? We be back next month? Or will this come back, we be back live, or is this going to come in email, or how are we going to receive these answers?
I can send it to you by email if you will.
Why don't we funnel them through Deb, and then that way Deb can present it to the whole committee?
That'd be good, that'd be great. Okay, and I think you did address some of the questions that we had last month about reverse osmosis system and the lighting and cancellation at the Victorian Christmas and what transpired related to that, so thank you for coming.
I got one last one, I got. I know that people have, I mean, I mean, and I just wondered if there's, you've been trying to do anything of reconnecting or trying to get the people to see, you know, see this, or help out or get more volunteers?
Oh, yes, yes. We've had open houses for volunteers, and we're advertising, and of course, word of mouth. We've gotten several more. Always.
Thank you, Jill, and Chris.
It's a two-way street.
Yes. One of my hand dusts will create a financial report when I do have something, okay? I'll just go over here, I'll put my.
The week of January twentieth, three days ago, each member of the Heath Community Arts Council, the mayor, and the executive director of the Davis Shay House received a letter signed by thirty-six former volunteers from the Davis Shay House, requesting that all photographs, hours of service, and cultural events in which we were involved that implied we were still a facility be removed. I am here as a spokesperson for these people who signed that petition. Now, we are aware that the Davis Shay House website is currently being revised. However, to date, only a portion of the photographs of these volunteers has been removed, and their names still remain where the photographs have been deleted. The executive director has been employed for seventeen months, and she'll be anxious to post her current volunteers' photographs and cultural events that have taken place under her direction. The Christmas photographs are from 2012 and earlier. The animated department store window Christmas setup by the Campbells has not been there for the past two years, and a good number of events shown are no longer being offered. The volunteer page states on the website, quote, "Over eighty volunteers are what helped create the magic in the Davis Shay House," unquote, and shows volunteers who worked three hundred-plus hours in 2011. All but a few of the eighty volunteers have left the facility. This page needs rewritten. The pictures along with the names need to be removed. The pictures in the volunteer family gallery should be deleted and replaced with current volunteers and cultural events that occur. To mislead the public into believing they can attend cultural events that are no longer offered using outdated pictures that feature some attendees that are deceased and exhibiting pictures of volunteers who left over a year to seventeen months ago is not only misleading, but false advertising and disrepresentation. The petition we signed and submitted said, quote, "We understand the history of the facility is important and should remain part of the facility's website," unquote. But we have asked that our pictures shown on cultural events, all of your home pages be removed. Keep in mind, the volunteers left on less than favorable terms. And the Heat Community Arts Council informed us that the organization is a private corporation and the financial reports are not for public review. Even though the Davis Shay House receives tax dollars paid by Heat citizens, it receives all but five percent of the city's bed tax. Knowing this, how can it be fair or ethical for us to be continued to be used to promote, promote programs at the Davis Shay House? Or to put us in a position where we must continually answer questions from the public as to why we are no longer there or support the facility we helped build? The request we have made is reasonable and our group has handled it in a professional manner. We would appreciate cooperation and that each issue be addressed by the revisions of the website being completed. So, our question is, are you going to honor our request in the future?
That site has been down for two weeks. You're not on there anymore?
Yes, we are.
Joan, I just tried to pull it up today and it didn't, it doesn't come up.
You're pulling up the wrong thing. You go in under Davis Shay House Volunteers, click on Volunteers, this is what you will find.
Yes, it's.
I'm just, uh, you, is that a, I'm sorry, what is the web address that you're going to again?
Davis Shay House Volunteers. And one picture has been, no, several pictures have been removed.
It's gonna be out there forever.
Uh.
Yes.
Uh.
Somebody can pull up the stuff, that's what they were doing on our website.
But this isn't, this isn't old stuff because there's pictures here. There's good pictures, Ruth Ann George has been removed, Bob Winkler has been removed. If you go into Davis House Events, it still shows Bob and I and the Garguses and our formal dress. And the, uh, Christmas pictures, there's the Campbells and the curtain stores, it's still.
May, may I please, um, because I have actually been working with this?
Yes, yes, please.
What has happened is we tried to physically remove the pictures from the website to keep the website up. As it turned out, there are glitches in the website that we could not make all that happen, which is why at that point, you could see that pictures were removed, names still remain. That's when we made the decision to take the website completely down. Because we couldn't physically make that happen and we wanna do everything we could to honor the request that they made. Uh, once you go on.
So, is the website being then totally rebuilt?
Yes.
If, if, if it couldn't be edited like that, you have to totally rebuild it?
No, we, it would have taken time to get that all fixed.
Okay.
So, we are in the process of revamping the entire website. So, we made a decision, and when you take the website down, it does specifically say to please call our number, so they can still contact us.
Yeah, that was the message that I got today, uh.
Yes, but when you go on the internet, um, there are things called caching and it's stored out there for ever. And if you wanna pull up something, you have to know exactly what to, to, to put in. And yes, it, it can still be accessed that way, but anything, anywhere has that same issue. We've, we have really tried to do everything we can to, to get rid of all of that and it's, it's out there.
So, what is your answer to that to my question?
The website is down.
That's not my question. I think that she's saying.
I think she's saying, yes, they're trying to.
They're processing it.
So, you are going to honor our request?
We have. And I guess I wasn't aware of, of the letter before tonight and so I, you know, I guess I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm surprised you would want to have the history.
The pictures that are the history because, you know, this, you know, things that happened in the house. The history is separate and apart. The history of the house should remain, but not.
But I mean, pictures of events that took place over the years, I, I'm surprised you would want that to come down.
Aren't there current ones?
Well, I don't know, they're working, I think they're working on it.
I don't know.
But I think that it's all, I guess that I think it all meshes together.
I understand you wouldn't want your names listed as volunteers.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I.
But then I, I showed you how we are and it's still there. And we do want them to be because people are still asking us to know that.
It, it's not physically possible to be done on that. We took the website, the website is gone. Anybody goes to our website, they are not.
But you.
So, the, the, the caching though of old pages like this.
They're still going to be.
Well, yeah, because I'm not, because I think Keith, you're right, I'm not sure there's any, it's not really anything you never do like that.
Well, it's on the internet, it's, it's for.
It's there. Well, under the circumstances that we left and some of the other things, I'm sure the Campbells don't want their Christmas setup left on that website.
It's, it's not on the website.
See, this is, this is, there's a disconnect here. They have taken the website down from the internet. You, you cannot access, if I go to, well, I tried to today, if you go to W W W dot Davis Shay or whatever it was, dot com, there's just like a two or three line man and it has the phone number there. So, you can't access the website now. But I think what's being said is, is that as it relates to pages that used to be on the website, there, and I think the term is cached, meaning that if you go, that, that you could still pull up a page that maybe hasn't, isn't on the active website, but you could still pull it up.
Well, then how did they remove some pictures from it?
We did that prior to the website being taken down. That's when we decided that we had to remove the entire website to get everyone's pictures removed, that wanted them removed properly.
So, you're saying when you do that, that these will don't want to be there with names?
Not on the new website, I think is what they're saying.
Yeah, if you go into the, the new website address, just the web, the new website that we will have designed will show up.
So, how are you able to remove some and not others? I mean.
I'm not sure where to go.
We're on the same page, Angel, we're on the same thing, the same page, Ruth Ann George, but Mary Eichelberry is still there.
That's what, there was a glitch where some of them were removed, some of them wouldn't. Um, I am definitely not an internet derailleur as far as a website. I was doing everything I could to get what was out there, which on this website is the main reason we are revamping through another. Is because the ability to make those kinds of changes were not easy, they're not, um.
User-friendly.
Not at all, not at all. And so, that's why we're going to another site that should be more user-friendly and where we are, are getting the help from that website to do it.
What you're saying, then there won't be any reference on that to the website, no?
Not to the website, no.
But as she's saying, what she's saying is you can't control the world wide web, it's out there and there's things that they won't be able to do.
I wanna understand that.
It won't be on their website, it will not be linked to their website.
Which maybe a year from now you could go and see, or two years from now you can go and see.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I understand, yeah.
But, but if, I, I think if what you're, if I'm hearing what you're saying right is you're redesigning the website to not.
Yeah, so anybody that pulls up W W W dot Davis Shay House dot com will go directly to our new website.
Yeah, and that new website will not have some of the pictures that the petition had asked me no longer have on the website.
Yeah, Deb, I have a question for you. Uh, at the last committee meeting in January, I asked if you had submitted the questions in writing of the city council members there in the October.
Yeah.
Uh, you said you'd get this to me.
Oh, I told Deb, cause if you want it, yeah, I can give you the connection in our. Okay, anything else for Jill?
I would like to address something. Um, yes, I have had actually this little bit of stuff that's been going on, you know? Um, it was actually fallen through over to my business and it becomes.
People, we should take, just take your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Steve Marshall and I'm with Creative Healing. And I recently, when I had events there, I, people circling the parking lot, like, you know, it's ridiculous. I mean, we are all adults. And, you know, it's, I'm saddened by this whole situation. I recently had a phone call two weeks ago, someone trying to disguise their voice, trying to act like we didn't know who it was calling. Well, with the newest technology with block calls and whatever else, you can tell block calls, you can talk to who they are, asking us questions. And, what do you know, we were still at the Davis Shay House and was inquiring about wedding. And when we tried to take down the. Yes, it was you.
Yes, it was me and my question, I said, you said.
And then when I ran into you.
Are you still involved with the Davis Shay House? I did not inquire about wedding.
Yes, you did, I still have it on my recording if you'd like to hear it, if you may.
Well, what's the harm in that? I just wondered.
You just said you didn't say it, but I have it on record.
Well, but the point is, what was the harm in asking if you were still there?
Because you tried to act like you weren't and you were, and we tried to accommodate you and you acted like, just call and ask. I mean, we're the ones that answer those questions.
No, I don't know harm with it, you're making it into something it was.
No, you.
Okay, well, we.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
We could probably debate this, you know, all night, but I think, you know.
I guess it's ridiculous, it's sad, it's very sad, you know, it's very sad and it has to be this way.
Okay, anything else? No, we will move on to item two, Bob, um, the Davis Shay's on the flatbed.
Uh, I'll make this simple, we had a bad bed on our flatbed, we put a new bed and now it's finished. It looks beautiful. We just replaced the, the, the bed on our flatbed. It was just made out of wood and it was deteriorating. It was, it's an orange flatbed we have in Park Street.
Oh, yeah.
It's a duff, it's a duff bed on it and then it was deteriorating. We pulled everything off and filed with new lumber on ourselves. Of course, underneath that was also rust and stuff, so eventually I'll be coming in and asking for new flatbeds. Even though we have a new bed, but, uh, yeah, we had some rust on it, we just replaced that, so. That's it.
Okay, any, have I had any questions about the replacement of truck bed? Any items under other items, anybody else have things for Park Street to leave the Shay? Gary Nunn, we will adjourn at six-thirty-one.
Thanks, Deb. Take quick break. Bob, let me know, let me know what, uh, let me know what Craig says about that roof, please. Yeah. Can you let me in?
Yeah.
Which way? I just want. Back in the office area?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Watching your body.
Yeah. Unless you have a quick tab.
I agree. Two weeks out. I, when, when I looked, I was, I was experiencing eighty-seven degree wind chill factor. When I watched CNN, that Newark, Ohio is the coldest place in the lower forty-eight.
That's what happens. But Heath was. Yeah. Just by nature, that someone else looked at.
That's all I saw.
We're around the sounds, I'm saying. Yeah, we got.
I think it was twenty-one or twenty-two below zero. So, anyway, I'm sorry for y'all, but I was glad we're about where I was.
Sorry, I feel the warmth coming from you either. I've seen, I, I've had that happen.
Yes, but two more weeks and we're out of this month and they're saying March, April, May.
Warm or normal, it's, uh.
Put my snow blower away.
If you don't reach it, it's.
I might be able to.
I just know from kids who's at work and say somebody, it's the same.
Neighborhood someone.
And if, it'll just carry it, don't say.
I have had very little.
Jim and I, Jim and I have kind of taken turns.
Oh. Oh, you live next to watercoaster?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Greetings, sir, how are you?
Just fine, how are you?
I was Law Paloma on Friday. I saw you and Butch leaving Law Paloma on Friday, I was sitting in, uh, Pappy's. I looked out the door and I saw you guys walking across parking lot, going after your car. Anything, and I, and I, I couldn't, I mean, you know. I said, I don't even have a lot of.
There was a five.
You guys eat here like about once a week or so, I figured you probably had a regular, I think, you've seen me there before, different days and stuff.
Basically, it takes.
Yeah, we, we put my wife and daughter there.
Yeah, yeah, well, that'd be.
My wife never takes the first thing you say, like, you say, you know, you wanna get pizza, yeah, where you gonna get it from? No matter what you say, she'll say no to the very first one. So, I was trying to, she said, I was trying to find somebody's taking the lunch, I was off that last Friday.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Outsourced or what?
Said, pick a place, I asked the page seat in here, nobody didn't care. I thought, no matter what place I say.
We wanna do this and this is.
So, I have three places in mind and I sent the first one. I was okay to go there, but I just sent it first, no one should say no to it, you know, and it.
Is these low numbers not too far?
Get the emails back, okay, okay.
General fund debt isn't bad. Actually, as you look at the general debt services, it doesn't extend out too bad, you know? Nine years is, uh, the worst. And, and stuff is dropping off, as you can see.
Eight pounds, ten pounds.
Cool, this probably drops off right there. Probably is the.
No, really?
I'm sorry, yeah, you asked me for that, didn't you? And cause Brian, oh, no. Back to side.
Ah, okay.
I guess we lost that this Friday.
Now, it might be a pretty.
We can check the air, see if it was. Let me get, uh, let me call. Water and wastewater.
He texted me last night, I can't believe I did it again. I started laughing, everything text last night, I'm thirty, I get this text, I can't believe I did it again.
Pretty much anything we do.
Yeah, so I had all planned, I was gonna put, and then I, cause I'm thinking, I'm thinking about, I said, Law Paloma, I said, somewhere out in the neck of the woods, you know, and everything. And I thought, well, if I put one of them first, it's gonna be a no. So, I did, so I said, no, I'll, I'll play the game, put it out there and I get back these two texts, yes, yeah, okay.
Their history to that.
So, then it's like, well, I can't now, so, so now I thought, well, if I send back, no, let's go to here, then they're gonna first say no, you know? So, then when they show up, I go, well, I was really thinking about going to, you know, Law Paloma, we could have gone there. I mean, why do you? But actually I got their, they had that, um, all the white fish you can eat, like nine ninety-five, eight ninety-five or whatever. I mean, I, I'm surprised, you know, but the long, so, I don't wanna catch fish, it actually is, but they were kind of like long skinny strip.
No, that's my prediction.
And, uh, and they brought a good plate full with fried. I, I mean, I was, I could have ate more, but I was like, well, that's plenty full, I mean, you know, it's like usual. But, uh, I mean, it was good taste and good flavor, good, I mean. I love their pizza and stuff there. Their Pappy Burger's good, their, their, uh, their pizza's good, but pizza almost has too much pepperoni on it, almost. Ever seen one of their pepperoni pizzas?
I see.
Get it sometime, get it sometime. Get, get a pepperoni pizza, just pepperoni and there'll be three times the pepperoni on there, it's not cheating, I guarantee it. Picking pepperonis off and making, some people do, I mean, they use that, I mean, it's like the pepperoni, pepperoni, a cup of pepperoni, I mean, it's just. I mean, it's almost like they make a pepperoni pizza, that's a, well, we gotta make pepperoni and just, I mean, it's good, I love, I love, I mean, I eat it all, it's, but it's. I mean, it's almost to the point where you say, it's almost too much pepper.
If you absolutely have to.
Yeah, get it, get it sometime, get it for lunch or something like that, just see. Now, watch, they probably cut, cut back now, it'll be like three pieces on there, you know?
If you can save and buy, you're better off.
I tell you, the worst is that, is, I, I mean, I love, I used to love to buy. It had the pepperoni, it's so thin that if you actually picked it up, you could read it. It had the pepperoni is so thin that if you actually picked it up, you could read through it. You know, so like when you have maybe two pieces, you know? You cut the pizza in quarters, still like you're like pepperoni, are you bringing on the bomb?
You, you have it in older versions.
What, what?
Yeah.
Is he, where did he come from?
Yeah.
I have.
Green egg. Have you ever had, have you ever had Don and C's pizza?
I don't have it in the gym.
Theirs was always famous for the cup and, and the grease you can sit in it. Now, my daughter used to take paper towels and I guess dab it on top and they just grease it.
Oh, everybody.
Let the pizza get, you know, you don't even put it in the fridge. Next morning, you eat it and anything, it's just like grease cats. I think you can actually pick out the grease.
So I think the takeaway from that parks meeting is that the ad gets expensive.
That's what I got.
That's all the notes I got.
We have a consensus on something.
I was just gonna show you because I'm.
Glad we could be there to unite.
Oh, we're all together. I think it screwed up. I thought she had it.
Yeah.
Wow. I don't know if I, I don't know.
I know.
I don't know if you wanna do that, yeah.
But I'm not going. I'll just stay.
Who knows who's over there just fishing?
I know.
Yes, I will.
I have one word on it. Tim and I are connected. Would you add that?
Is there a recycle paper in the, is due to be?
Yes.
No, there's something on the back that I've got.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I am saving money by not printing another sheet.
Okay.
Well.
Make a motion.
Our treasurer, first of all, he, he, he has all kinds of papers like that. So he always prints the financials on the backside of all kinds of like old invoices and stuff like that. So you get them half the time and you're going, some of this stuff, and it's, you know, then you realize you're on the wrong side and everything, so.
This is hard.
Yeah, he does. He saves all his paper and then just, you know, cause we just throw them away after, but anyway, he just saves all that stuff and runs it to the opposite way to make our financials.
Ken. Oh. I, I, I think I have it. There wasn't anything I could do.
Yeah.
I might have a copy of it, but all it was is exactly what.
You have the legislative request that has indicated on my report or just to.
Lynn, Lynn has had.
I'm gonna crawl in, right?
Yeah.
Have you started your meeting yet?
That's a finance committee meeting.
Okay.
I don't think we had Jeff.
No, no, okay. I just wanted to ask the mayor a question.
We can start it yet.
Can, can he, can he step out here for a minute?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Anything for you, Carolyn, what's happening?
I probably need like five minutes for new carcass if you, if we have to run all the way to time wash. I don't know what time you need. Give me at least five minutes.
I've got some topics that will be interesting.
Well, it gets to be about seven twenty, you know? I'll start getting a little nervous.
Hey, hey Doug, did your wife ever receive pictures that I sent her email?
Yeah.
Cool, good. I didn't wanna send too many, but I can send more.
Yeah, I, I, I showed it to her.
Okay, good.
She does, I pass with that.
Well, was your daughter with you guys that night? Okay, well, she was saying, send them to mom so I can help her see them, so. And it took me a while.
She's the one that's computer liveries.
Oh, and the thing I was, I was, did you see the paper yesterday? Uh, Windows XP, April eight is gonna be history.
Yep.
Any information or anything you've got on your.
Was last I knew.
You gotta either get a computer or.
Save her.
They don't want me to afford it, so I'm supporting it.
Yeah, then you just don't get anything to support those programs there.
It'll still work. It'll still work.
Right.
But, but you're not, but virus or something like that, they can attack. But, you know, you wanna, I don't.
What's it name?
I just figured it meant you wouldn't get updates, like you get updates.
You can still buy.
You can still buy virus software.
Yeah, you can still buy virus.
Oh, I've got that. I've got that.
I'm just trying to stay away from this aid.
Find that after, well, now.
Just, we have it work like Cat Burgers and stuff all run on that. Something I'm gonna do.
It's a nightmare in there.
They said you can get Windows seven.
Seven, good.
Seven, Windows seven.
Eight's, eight's not good.
Eight's a, yeah.
Eight's a whole different problem.
If you got one now, you probably get eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eight's.
I don't know what they do with leaves things alone. I know they do it so they can sell more product and stuff.
Right.
You know, but they do it with like CAD and I think they come up with a new version every year so we can, hardly anything changes. If you just need to draw a line, you just need to draw a line. It don't matter how many other ways you do. But they change it so you have to, and then after so many years, they won't support it. So if something goes wrong, then you gotta buy that, and that's the same thing they're doing with an XP. CAD won't work on it anymore, or they won't support it anymore, so they want you to buy a whole new program. Well, then you have to buy new operating system, you know? You have to buy new CAD software.
You gotta buy a new tower, the whole bit.
You gotta buy everything then, for the, you know?
You mean monitor too?
Well, you wouldn't have to buy a monitor, no. Not a ma, you know, the mouse, monitor, key, it would all work, but, you know?
You gotta get the new tower.
I said, yeah.
Probably do.
Do you have a system?
Yeah.
Do you have a system working?
Probably.
The wire. I keep drawing on the screen there. I rise in the dust of my screen and hope it sees us. Thanks.
Are we all here? Who's gonna be here for lunch?
Okay, we'll call, uh, finance committee meeting in order at six forty-seven. We have a total of six legislative requests. We've got four listed. I've got two more from this evening. First one. Appropriate, appropriation seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars within law enforcement trust funds. So scratch ten thousand, make it seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five. The breakdown, let's see, it's, first one, two thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars within the general fund for the purchase of a new network server and software.
So it's, it's not ten thousand dollars. It is ten thousand dollars in total, but it's seven thousand seven twenty-five within the law enforcement fund. And two thousand two seventy-five within the general fund. And the reason being, when, when the, the, in Lieutenant Mason's commentary about the selling the two vehicles, one of them was a vehicle that source, when we purchased it, was the general fund. So when we sold the vehicle, it had to go back to the general fund. So.
That's the two thousand two seventy-five.
Yes, and then you can see down here, I've noted that at the bottom of this legislative request.
So it is a cumulative ten thousand. It's just broken into two different funds.
That's correct.
Total of ten. It is ten.
The, uh, Lieutenant Mason did a good job also of, um, hunting out a good price on these. And, you know, we actually, um, got a better price directly through Dell with the police department's account with Dell than what we had been quoted, you know, from our, uh, IT provider. So kudos to Lieutenant Mason for looking at under every rock to try to make sure that we're getting the best deal possible.
Is our IT person, none of this?
Yeah, and, and, and as a matter of fact, back when, they were the ones that recommended on a different situation, said, why don't you try to contact them directly? Oh, okay. You might get a better deal.
Good.
Other comments? Committee okay with this?
Yep.
Second legislative request, appropriation of two thousand five hundred dollars within the capital improvements funds, supplement purchase of a new network server and software. Which is what we just talked about.
Yeah.
Comments? Everybody okay?
I just, I just have a question. Why is it separate? Why is it from the common law or separate?
Cause they sold that crew, the first crew, and so it was.
Okay, okay.
So they left that.
Okay.
It's, it's for supplemental stuff.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. We're on to the third one. Request appropriate ninety-nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from within the capital equipment fund, purchase two twenty-fourteen dots charger police sedans and one twenty-fourteen Ford SUV. PPV stands for?
Police pursuit.
Pursuit vehicle.
You said it better than I did, okay. Fully equipped, repair, safety, emergency equipment, vehicle graphics. Purchase pricing is based on twenty-fourteen state contract. Take care of the dogs and everything, right? No more overruns, no more additions.
We had, uh, in our capital improvement planning document, we had planned for, I think, one oh five of these three items. Is that right, Jim?
Sure. Questions, comments, concerns? Fourth item, appropriation fifty-seven hundred dollars within the capital improvements fund, purchase installation, two backup radios, cabling and antenna, city radio system.
I don't know whether now is that, but does that number, uh, the two cars, does that need waived?
Oh, oh, four would be waived.
Yes.
Oh, four, we just talked about. We're waived, right? We're talking about that topic.
I'm not sure I signed that one yet either. I have on it.
What's that?
On it. Patrol cars and the SUV. Have you signed that one?
Sort of a little.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Here's a function case of catastrophic failure of the radio tower and radio console. This will act provided invaluable during the last storm that disabled our radio tower in Dujie River. Other comments? Just come out of Brian's committee. Thumbs up? Fifth item we discussed this evening. Appropriate one hundred forty-five thousand, purchase tandem dump truck chassis, bed, plowed accessories from Ace Truck equipment out of Zanesville. Doug, any other comments? Committee? Ground clear. Sixth item again. Doug's committee this evening, appropriate seventeen thousand dollars to law and general contractor to clear log jam at Irving Wick and South Fork Road, declaring emergency. Any comments, Doug?
No, just that it really, they're, they're down there working on it. I saw that when I left, sitting here exactly about this early, and I saw them down in there with the.
Bob said, Bob said you're done.
It would surprise us, and I think they, they would.
Are they done?
No, I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying, thought you were contributing to the conversation. Okay.
Okay. Everybody good on that? All right, other items?
Okay, item one has been resolved. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Uh, item number two is a, uh, basically a report that, uh, we have received the invoice to pay off the water tower on Seminary Road. Uh, we will do so on or before March sixth, which is the due date. The, uh, as you may recall, the city floated notes, uh, for four years. Um, I guess three years plus the initial note. With the intention being, based on a study that was completed by Malcolm Perney on our, our rates for water and wastewater, that we would accumulate enough in cash to pay off that tower in four years. The, uh, I thought you might find it interesting that the rates of interest that we paid, counting all of the costs associated with those notes, bond counsel, underwriting, all the, the aspects of those notes, were one point three percent in two thousand ten and eleven, and then point nine four percent, zero point nine four, I should point, make a point of, in two thousand twelve, and then most recently, point eight nine in two thousand thirteen. So we will not renew that note. We're gonna own water tower after only four years. I'm real pleased with, with that result.
What's the payoff? I mean, what, what are we paying?
Um, I'm.
About one point four, wasn't it, Keith?
I think it's one point three and change. Uh, but we started with about one point five and we used some capital improvement money and we paid the interest at, at times along the way. So, uh, um, that's the story on that.
Had we done this the old traditional way? We would have.
Been paying for twenty years.
Twenty-year term when we got done before.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Good job on this, Keith.
What kind of, what kind of intrigue could we get if we didn't do it for another year and we take that money and we, you know?
That's against the wall.
I'm sorry. David, do you have something to add?
Go ahead.
It was Mr. Kelly to bring that up.
That's K E L L Y. No, we use that money to pay something else.
Council president Kelly brought that up.
Oh, you know, pay off something else more, you know, than that. Then we have something else out there that costs us more now?
I hope you're not an accountant or a little bit. Have you filled out your ethical questionnaire yet, Mr. Kelly?
Well, it's more deniability. Didn't know what the question means, but it's the best deniability.
Ugh. Um, I, I, I think, uh, I, 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 I do think Keith, uh, kudos to you for kind of mapping out this, um, this strategy. And also, um, you know, I, I, I think, I think it would, we wouldn't be able to pay it off had counsel not, uh, you know, in the last rate study that we did, uh, you know, determined what we needed to do to get this thing paid off in four years. To have that big debt off our, um, off our back in only four years is, is a great thing for the city.
It's off the citizens' back.
Correct, correct.
So I'm pleased, real pleased with that. And I'm real, you know, we could have looked at, uh, interest rates that soared. My crystal ball was only as good as anybody else's back then. Uh, and there was no guarantees, but it really worked out great.
Can you do that for the pool?
If we were to, uh, well, certainly.
Do with anybody.
Yeah, would, this, this concept should work for any major capital improvement. Do I have a, do I have a guarantee that the future will be similar as to what we?
There are guarantees in life, Keith.
That's right. But, but let me tell you, I, I, I believe we are going to be in a long-term low interest. But, but let me tell you, I, I, I believe we are going to be in a long-term, low-interest rate climate. And I don't mind explaining why. There is so much governmental debt in the world. And I think government's gonna do everything and anything it can to suppress the interest rates worldwide. It's gonna be in Europe, where they have proportionally worse debt than this country has, and this country's debt is atrocious. So, you know, could we go back to the days of nineteen seventy-nine and eighty? Where the term double-digit inflation was predominant and home mortgage rates were twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent?
No, more like eighteen. Fix rates had were eighteen eighty-one.
Yeah. So.
Your prime, the prime, the prime rate was twenty-one and a half percent.
Nineteen eighty-one.
It's now a quarter percent. So, yeah, I stand corrected. I don't foresee us going thanks a lot.
It's one thirty-some years of banking. Live that.
Well, you know. Here's the problem, Doug. One of the reasons why we were able to pay this off in four years is because we had a revenue stream that allowed us to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, Keith already did, um, refinance that debt, what, a year, a year or two ago, something like that? So, um, you know, we had a shot to, uh, to, to adjust that, and, uh, and we took it.
Yeah.
And, uh, so.
Reduce the debt service.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I'm quite certain Keith's on top of it. Well, if you look at it. What's his voice, Keith?
Well, thank you.
All right, I got, I got another. Ready to move on?
That's all you, baby.
All right, item three, I'm gonna call your attention to the reverse of your finance committee agenda. And I want you to look at one fifty-nine twenty-seven down at the bottom of the page. And it talks about prohibited activities. You can see that this is in the administrative code. I, and it was hard not to read, notice the stories in the Newark Advocate relative to the participation of some municipal unions in their local election. There was, uh, and, and I, I don't have, I'm not privy to, I could be, actual finance reports of candidates, but, uh. Newark municipal unions were, were able to participate in their local government elections. To the ten of some very significant contributions. The, the story I read indicated where one candidate received as much as two thousand five hundred dollars. And I, I, I guess I want you to put that in perspective to the political races here in Heath. And how some in this room would feel about other, uh, certain candidates maybe being singled out. And supported by municipal unions to the degree that they were in Newark could, could significantly affect the outcome of an election in the city. Now, this prohibited activities references. Some things regarding that. It could be construed to suggest that you may, that, that city employees would, would be prohibited from participating in a local election. But I call your attention to this for the purpose, I guess, of your consideration to maybe strengthen the language of this. Or, might be that somebody to think that the, the activities of those Newark unions would be, uh, a good thing. I don't know. The, the, the point is that, uh, this section would appear to me to prohibit that, and I, you know, I don't know. I asked David to kind of look at this, and I don't know if he has comments too, but I'm a little, I, I was taken aback by the, that participation indirectly by Newark city employees into the outcome of that election. And.
Keith, it's a better public record that you go down to the board of elections and you can ask to see any person who has run and who donated to them and how much, so, you know.
But the question is, should, should our administrative code be strengthened to prevent that type of participation?
Second question is, can it be? And that's where I've, I've got a lot of work to say.
Yeah.
Before I can answer that.
Okay.
You're saying that someone didn't accept money from certain, I mean, communities or whatever?
Right now, this, I, you know, I, I guess I should leave it to the law director to maybe answer a question regarding the phraseology of this. This appears to me. Says employees shall refrain from using their influence publicly in any way for or against any candidate for elective office in municipal government.
Be nice to be able to get into there.
I don't know what any, in any way means.
It'd be nice to be able to get into the head of the people who drafted this to, trying to understand what they meant from using their influence publicly.
In any way.
And, and in any way.
Phrase.
What's that mean? Does that mean?
It sure is. You know, it could be construed as such, but I, I would hate to see the future candidates of the city of Heath being so influenced by so much money. And, and then, then you have the, the squirming that's obviously going on in Newark at this time with, with accusations, public accusations that they're getting. Uh, I would, I wouldn't wish that on any of these members that are sitting here now. So, you know, the, the question is, what can you do? And I don't know to what degree, and, and, uh. I just think that would be a real shame, and it might be wiser to maybe learn from what I perceive to be some mistakes in Newark. And to prevent that difficulty, or maybe, maybe some people wouldn't be uncomfortable with that, I don't know.
Ken, did you do the story on that?
I did one.
Okay. So maybe you looked into this. Does Newark have anything in their administrative code similar to this that? Well, Tim, you might not, yeah, you can work there. What does Newark have?
Well, like Ask Me, okay? You can give political contributions to, it's called Ask Me People. You can have money that goes in there, okay? It's completely separate from anything else, it's a pot of money they can give for political campaigns, okay? You as a person giving money, let's say you give twenty bucks to it or whatever, you have no clue how they're gonna spend that twenty bucks, okay?
Yeah.
But that Ask Me People could all of a sudden give a candidate for council, for mayor, for whatever, could give them political contribution for how much they want.
Is it a PAC? Is it a registered PAC?
I, I couldn't, I think so, but, but what I'm saying is. You, you as a, as a member, the way they isolate that, you can give money to that, you have no control over it, it comes back and stuff, because you can't legally do, like, give a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars to, you know, the candidate, so you don't want to, you want to keep that. Because if they lose, but for years, Ask Me over the years has given money to different campaigns, it just never made the publicity. I mean, Rhonda Loomis has made it a front-page issue by speaking about it, but it's been, for years, they've been giving money to, we gave money to, I mean, you know.
Yep.
Ask Me has always given money to the Democrats. I'm a Republican, I don't give them any money, but they take dues money, whatever, you know, they've done it for years, you know? And then, of course, the change, you know, things have changed and stuff, how they do it, but I don't know, to me, it's up to the person that's running for office to figure out who they're gonna take money from, because theoretically, you could give money to, uh, AARP, to the veteran, to whoever. And that group could come back and say, we're, you know, the, give money to this candidate or that candidate and stuff. So, how you're ever gonna say, well, I gave money to, you know, let's say whoever, you know, Sir Tom, I gave money to Sir Tom. Sir Tom decided they're gonna back a certain candidate because they like him. What are you gonna do? You know, I mean, you can't, you know, or the Lions, or the, you know, I mean, all those groups have their own little rules and what they can and can't do. But you could belong to any group or any organization and give them money through your dues or through whatever, and then they decide, you know, that, hey, they're gonna support this guy. I mean, you know, like I said, I don't.
You know, the first.
I don't know how you don't.
Election I ran in, I went to Butch, because I've always used those guys over there, him, for, you know, my personal. And I asked him what leeways do I have when I go out and campaign, and he says, and he pointed out that particular one. And he says, if he remember right, when John Taylor and those people up there that were put it in there, was it prevented me from, say, this before we changed the charter, we, when we became, what is it, you can't run on a Democrat, Republican.
Nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan. When we became nonpartisan, that changed it. But then, he said, if, uh, if, uh, whatever party that you're, you know, registered under, don't put one of their signs in your yard or don't hand that material down at the football game, you know? And that was extent, he told me I had to watch out for it, not risk. No, no mention of money, you know? I don't know. Well, I found out, and, but what Tim said is, for our fee group, we give monies for PACs, you know?
You give to the NRA, and the NRA is gonna take and distribute that money to do this in favor of no gun legislation. We all know that, I mean, that's a PAC, and it's just.
I don't think we can do any good changing until they change the federal law.
It's an, it's an interesting, uh, I mean, it's an interesting topic that, that Keith brings up. I think, um, clearly, already in the code, there are some restrictions on what city employees, you know, are allowed to do. That are, you know, not restrictions, that, that, that the general public has. Like I said, you, you, you kind of wish you could understand a little bit what they meant by using their influence publicly. Um, what does, what is influence? You know, influence can be a lot of different things.
Forty-five hundred dollars, I think, is one of them.
That's my opinion for a local election.
Here's a question I have about this.
So that means when I walk in here and I was running, and I asked somebody to sign my petition, I was in violation of this?
I guess I refer to that question, but honestly, I've, I've had, I have had city employees refuse to sign my petition citing this administrative.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In, in, in the office, Doug, you go outside and go, go at your house or their house or whatever, they can sign it, because.
Yeah.
But here's my thing about this. What if you violate any part of this? Or who's decide how you violate? For examples about, it says, I think it's, I don't like a lot of this, but the public campaigning behalf of, a lot of people won't put signs in their yard. Employees won't put signs for one candidate and the other because of this, okay? But if the spouse is not an employee, and the spouse decides, I'm putting, this is my house, I'm putting it out there, then are you in trouble? Because, wait a minute, I gotta sign up my yard, and I'm an employee, but I didn't put it out there, my wife put it out there, or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So then, and then you get under freedom of speech and all that kind of stuff. What, who are we to say what you can and can't do at their house and that kind of stuff? That's where I, and I want to know, what's the penalty? Let's say, you know, someone wears a, a badge, a little city employee would wear a hat or something that said Vote For Joe, or whatever. I mean, what is the penalty for them doing Vote For Joe? I mean, is there a penalty? Is there a, a whatever? You know what I'm saying? And, you know. Well, that's, I mean, you know, you can put all the rules you want in here, but it's like, when it comes to, actually, if you had to go fight this in court and stuff with freedom of speech, and I think you might lose on a lot of saying you can't do this and can't do that.
Here's the thing too, is if an employee of the city, according to this, could not campaign for Joe Schmo that's running for US Senate. Says can't campaign on behalf of any elective official.
Yeah.
None of us, none, none of us could.
Right.
None, none of our employees could. We couldn't, uh, we couldn't do, you know, anything.
There's, there's a whole bunch of the wording of this that I don't think fits, and that's, that's one of it.
Right.
One of them, and, and I, I'm wondering if the section shouldn't.
According to this.
Well, there you go.
It's too ambiguous.
What did you say?
I couldn't put my, I couldn't put a sign.
It says off city premises.
To elect me in my own yard, according to that.
Well, this one here.
Right?
This, number one.
Turned you in.
Doesn't apply in Newark, because we would not, we would not, thank you.
Mayor?
Number one here doesn't apply in Newark.
Right, because you couldn't be here.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
I said, number one doesn't apply in Newark at all, because Deb and I couldn't be here.
Correct.
Okay?
You know, and, and if, if Bev Shepherd, who lives clear out in Muskingham County, north, wanted to run for township trustee or clerk or something, I see nothing wrong with that, honestly. So, this whole section, I think, needs to be scrutinized, maybe redone, and I think this body can.
Remove the ambiguity.
Throw it out.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
I mean, to me, I know that you're.
You know, twenty-five hundred dollars is a lot of money, and, you know. You can go down and you can check, you can check who donated to me, and you will find out that I've, I've received money from the UAW. Which, that was from their cap council, and, you know, it was, it was not a great amount of money.
I don't have a problem with that.
But I have a problem with a municipal, city union, or individual, collectively or individually, giving money to affect the outcome, where you could be sitting across then at the bargaining table with the mayor.
Yeah.
All right?
What if, Keith, what if it was a, what if it was a local developer? Who at some point could come to the city wanting this, that, or the other? Would, would that same scrutiny apply?
Yeah. I, I would, I would think so. And, and, but the, the trouble is, our administrative code isn't going to be able to affect that development.
Yeah.
So, your good judgment in choosing who you accept money from is gonna be pretty important.
That's where I think it's up to the campaign person, the candidate, or the candidates against it or for that person, should make it clear, this person's taking money from this or not taking money, and then it's up to the voters to decide when that is influenced.
There could, there could be some potential, uh, conflict.
I, I, I look at.
Now, I, I think, I think it's, I mean, I, I, I'm glad Keith kind of brought this up, and, and I, and I think it's, you know, I, I think it's, I think it would be good for us to kind of reflect on this a little bit. I, 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 I think that by and large, uh, the, the employees of the cities and the elected officials of the city do adhere to what I think is the spirit of what is trying to be, uh, accomplished i- in this. Question is, if there's gray area, you know, should we try to identify it and, and, and lessen it?
And I, and I would just like, you know, I'd just like to hold a record and just say, I don't give a damn who gave you. If I don't even want to name, and they're not, I don't care what union it was, or who I was sitting across the table with. I know what my, you know, feelings are as far as the money, you know, it takes money, you know that, it takes money to run an election. And we all ask for donations, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna be, you know.
Well, that kind of leads to what Tim was saying a little bit there.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, I think it's up to the candidate, how much money you want to, and, you know, I mean, and who you take it from and what you're taking for and everything.
Consideration caucus, we got, we got one last, uh, item here.
Yeah. Wrap up. Councilman Crable, Finance Chair Crable, asked me to do some debt service charts to indicate how our debt service is going to diminish. He wasn't specific in.
Get us a copy.
Oh, I'm sorry, they, they didn't get handed out. Oh, I'm sorry, they didn't get handed out.
Did you get one?
Don't give him that.
Is it just one set?
That's one set.
Oh, I thought I had five here.
You actually did.
Yeah, I did.
For a minute. What I was thinking of was the Malcolm Purney study. And he elaborated, I wasn't sure where it was created, I remember it happened about five years ago, and we're due to have another Malcolm Purney rate study. But this is kind of an overview in addition of just water and wastewater, other things that we've got that have cut bonds and has expired. It's actually better than what I expected.
Good.
It is.
From one of the things that, one of the things in that exercise for the water and wastewater rate study, one of the, one aspect of that exercise is to try to project, you know, improvement projects that you're, that, you know, that you're gonna have. We had, in the last study, we had projected paying off the tower. We had projected the improvements at the wastewater facility. So, that's one of the ideas of that, is to try to, and then you plan your rates accordingly so that you can handle what you're, what you're looking to take on.
Okay, I have one other item. I may not be here. My travel plans for around Mardi Gras, which pretty much has been an annual event for me, are not firmed up, but there's a possibility I'll be absent on March 3rd. And if I am, you will have Becky McComb here to do financing.
Next one.
Go down, get a supply of beans.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, we're out at 7:21.
Who's doing the invocation? Dick, you doing it, or Cleese? I think you did it last.
Did you cleave it last time?
Yeah.
Oh, must be my turn.
I think you did it last time.
Oh, no, invocation delivered by Dean Morrow.
That's what I thought. So, it's gonna be Cleese then.
Is Brian gonna be here?
Brian is supposed to be here, he said he would be here, so we'll just see if he pops in. If he isn't here by the time we do roll calls, I'm excusing him, but, you know. Improvement, then election point, let's go down to petitions and communications.
Oh, oh, wait, 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 wait. Lynn reminded me again, that liquor license, gotta do something with it.
Right.
Okay.
We'll read it tonight, and I assume we're not gonna request it here? Dick, you okay with not requesting it here?
Pardon me? On the liquor license? Yes, so. So.
Meeting last week.
Jeff, will you do that one?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, and then.
Lynn just is emphatic.
Dick, you do number B then, 7B, the delinquent accounts?
Yes.
Okay, and then after you do that, do the receiving file, all communications?
Are you gonna do that?
I am.
Cleese issued on the invocation, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Come down, all the ordinances, the first four of them need to be waived, and that's all. I guess, actually, Brian, Brian would do that, if Brian. Yeah, all of them.
Vice Chair Doug?
Yes, I am.
If Brian isn't here, then Doug will do it. Now, the disposable life packs.
Might as well do it too, so.
Let's fire and stuff. You might as well do, you might as well do all five of those. Of five of those. Then, on the second reading, the capital, the stabilization one, Jeff, will you do that? And then the, okay, you might as well do both of them. Is everyone okay with any questions on this? And then that's pretty much it.
Oh, you have three minutes.
Yep.
So, so you would have just, they would have just been stuck.
Because the council does nothing, takes no action.